Okay, I'm going to call this meeting a regular meeting of the Virgin City Council on May 22nd, 5:33 PM. Would everyone please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no amendments to the agenda that we have. Does anybody have any amendment, anything that needs to be added? Okay, if not, we'll go right to visitors, Sarah and Brian. It's your show.
We're actually closer than that.
You could just kind of go through the situation, you know, the financial situation and the formula. And actually, I don't know the difference in the amount of money between what we're paying now and what we wouldn't pay.
Do an overview, do you want me to just get right into it?
Do whatever you would like.
So, good evening. So, we are here, we're kind of on a request from Mr. Hawley to discuss the contract that we had brought forth to the city council. Sarah and I were actually here three years ago in a similar situation, just to share some information about the squad financially and just get an understanding of why we had the increase back three years ago and going to do the same thing tonight. And so our hope is just to give you a quick overview and then allow for any questions that you have about our finances. And then we have membership applications to give to you all in order to join, which is really by far the thing that we struggle with the most and is the piece that continues to drive our expenses for the organization, which is payroll. So we've seen almost a 30% increase in payroll expenditures from three years ago, and that is directly related to just a lack of volunteers. So I can remember a time, three or four years ago, in which we brought on our first full-time person that we were trying to fill, you know, a couple, two or three days during the week with a person. And now we're at a point where we're paying people even to be on call during the night. And so as a treasurer, you can see how I'd feel that we're paying someone X number of dollars an hour to be sleeping. And it hurts. It hurts our organization for sure. And so above and beyond any type of medical costs or lack of reimbursements from Medicare, all those things pale in comparison to where we just sit from a volunteer shortage. We're not alone. That is something that's across the board. I believe there was a thing in WCAX a couple nights ago where Waterbury had their piece for a bit discussing their volunteers. When that's a rescue, I'm sure Virgin's Fire has the exact same situation that we do. We don't have the solution necessarily, the magic bullet. There are a number of things that we've undertaken in order to help with that, in addition to small things like a banner, which does actually help and has actually brought in a couple people to an increased presence on social media. And then also some things that we're doing for our current members in order to retain them, to keep them interested, and getting people into classes so they can advance into their, further their medical educations. By far, the biggest problem that we have are our crew chiefs. So these are the people that are leading the actual, leading the calls themselves. We typically have a person there in advance or an AEMT role that takes additional training. So even though we might have, you know, we brought in 10?
10 per diems?
No, the volunteers for 2000 and within the last year.
Seven.
Seven. So we brought in seven volunteers, which is awesome, which is actually a pretty big number for us to be doing compared to the last three or four. But those folks are starting off at a CPR level. And to get to a person where they're actually an AEMT level and being able to run a call as a crew chief is years, right? This is not even a six-month piece. And so we've had to rely on a lot more per diem employees. These are people that are basically, for lack of a better word, freelancing around the different rescue squads and offering their services, not as a full-time employee, but basically picking up shifts as we need them. And so right now, we are paying out, we're really about three to four employees that we're paying out anywhere from 40 to 60 hours a week right now of non-volunteer time. And that can get pretty brutal. So it's not all dire. I think that we, that as a squad, we feel very financially sound compared to some of the other horror stories that we see from other agencies. We feel confident in our structure and we feel comfortable in kind of the way that we've been budgeting and more importantly, a mindset of what we're trying to do with our revenue to make sure that we continue moving in the right direction. And that's where the towns and you all come into effect. So our revenue models have really have not changed for the last three years. There are three principal ways that we receive our money. One is the billing to the insurance companies, and that makes up about 75% of our income. We have our subscription program to our, to the folks that live in our responding area that make up about another 12%. And then there's the town, the town piece in which we ask a per capita rate from each of the towns that make up the remaining, which make up the remaining 12, 13%, 12, 13%. So about five years ago, we kind of said, okay, we've got it. Number one, we, we're all citizens of these towns too, so we understand the situation that we're in. We're trying to, we want to make sure that we're giving you all enough notice and that we're not coming to you every year, 2, 3, 4% increases each year. And so three years ago, we said, we felt pretty comfortable in maintaining that for a couple, two or three years. And I think we felt pretty good that we were able to maintain that. But that's what, that's why we're here. The, what we have, so those three revenue streams, what we've determined that we have, we have somewhat flexibility and increases that we can ask for insurance. So that we have some flexibility in asking for a greater compensation from insurance companies like Blue Cross, Cigna, some of the larger ones. We don't have that flexibility with Medicare or Medicaid. And so this 2018, we did raise our rates to insurance companies, which helped, but that only gets us a certain amount of level because it's only about 20% of our calls are actually going to insurance. So the second piece is our subscription. And so our plan is for 2020, there'll be a, there'll be a small bump in our subscription fee, which brings us to 2019, our third, which is our plan for our towns to increase the amount that we're looking for the towns. So 2018 was an increase in our revenue on billing, 2019 an increase for our income from the towns, and then 2020 to our subscriptions. And then we would expect hopefully for that then to revolve around for another three-year cycle. The second thing that we're looking to do this year is to square our contracts with all the towns. There had been confusion arise from when, when contracts were actually, became effective, when the, when they rolled over for the next year, when they were being billed. And so we're taking this opportunity to basically start anew on January 1st, 2019. All contracts will begin on January 2019, end on 31st, and then auto-renew at the end of that with the ability for each of the, either the towns or Virgin's Rescue to get out of that. And the billings will all start at January 1 with a net 30 after January 1 of that particular year. And so everyone is on the same wavelength. Virgin's is a little bit special for a number of different reasons, but a little bit special because our current contract officially would be ending June 30th of 2018. Our intention is that we would just bill for that remaining six months at the existing rate that we are now, rather than trying to bill you now on July 1st moving forward. I've had some brief conversations with Mel this afternoon of, you know, we would feel comfortable in doing that six months without an addendum contact, contract for that. If the city council or Mel would feel that you will want to do something for that six months, we could put something together also. And that's the shtick.
Council have questions?
What is your, what is your cash on hand?
Our cash on hand right now, so if you were to ask me right now, it's going to be different in about 30 days when we have, we purchase an ambulance. Our cash on hand checking is about 100 and about 140,000. Our, we have a, an endowment fund that's kind of not, non-liquid, that's at 250, 260 right in, right in that area. The majority of that cash on hand is actually tied up in their ambulance fund. So we run, the last couple of years, we've been running our, our monthly cash flow of anywhere around 80 to 110,000, which has been pretty heavy. In the past, we've had to finance the purchase of our ambulances, going back to the fact that we've got ourselves some, some financial sounding. We're actually going to be able to pay cash from just money we've been able to put off into these ambulance funds. But that will be bringing our cash on hand just for AP down to probably around 50,000, which is enough to be able to, you know, cover, you know, probably about six to eight weeks payroll in case we had a major problem bringing in cash from billing.
So you have, besides cash on hand, you have another, it sounds like you have another pot of money.
Yep. So that, that's a great, very valid question. So that money has been there for almost, I would say 20 years?
At least 20.
Yeah, 20 years. The intention of that has always been for a large building renovation or movement. We, you know, we discussed this about five, six years ago, and just the money wasn't enough money. And we could see that we weren't going to be able to keep up with whatever debt load that we would be bringing on to that. The only expenditure we brought out of that was actually when we did the roof two years ago, we took some money out of that endowment for that.
So what's in that pot?
What's in the two?
Yeah, what is in the, in the, you said you're buying an ambulance for basically cash, right?
Yeah, so we have, so we have a, we have a separate banking account, which is our ambulance, our ambulance fund. And so part of our, part of our budget is we basically try to spend for the last four years, basically taking $20,000 of cash, putting that into the ambulance replacement fund, allowing that to be able to grow, then pay for the ambulance and then bring it down. When I started with, in the treasurer role, we, we were borrowing around, back up a second. So probably about like 10, 15 years ago, we were buying a new ambulance every three years. We had enough money to put it off, pay it out for cash, and then we were good to go. When we started seeing the volunteers start to drop off and our payroll started to increase, they got to a point where they were not able to put the money into that pot. And so they ended up having to go back and actually finance almost the entire purchase of the ambulance at, and at that time, $180,000, $180,000, and now it's $195,000. So we've gotten to a point where we're having to finance our ambulance back to, back to where we can actually pay cash for it, which goes back to the stability of the organization. But to answer your question, that 250 endowment is really has been seen as capital for building or something much larger than that. And we've always paid out of the operational cash for ambulances, medical supplies and everything like that.
I guess one of my concerns is certainly there's no criticism of the rescue squad. I don't mean that by any means. They do a wonderful job and they're always responsive and we boost them a lot. But my question is, I know that one of the problems is getting full squads. You hear it all the time on the radio. And one of my concerns is that Charlotte, you must have to pay Charlotte to come down. How does that work?
So there's two, there's two different ways that that could work. So we have, so we have a mutual aid agreement with all the agencies that surround us, whether or not that's Bristol, Charlotte, or Middlebury, depending on where that is. And so we could be relying on mutual aid for two different reasons. One reason is that we have one rig out and we don't have a standby crew for the second rig. Or it could very well be that we've put out two rigs and we still need another ambulance in which we would bring in one of those days. In that situation, there's no, there's no payment out to those organizations. If they transport the person, they're billing for that particular person and they're, it's just, it's their, it's their call. There is a situation in which we have been, you did the calculation, 36 hours in 2018?
Yes, for 365 days, we were only out 36 hours, out where we didn't have a crew on crew.
Even a primary crew, right?
So it broke down to .004% of the year.
So even in those cases, if we're bringing, you know, if we don't have a crew at all and we're bringing in Charlotte, again, there's no money out for us. Where there's money, where there's money paid out is when, two reasons. The primary reason is when we ask for a paramedic intercept, right? So Virgin's Rescue is not a paramedic agency. We don't have, we have just made the decision, that's just not where we want to be. So if we have to bring Charlotte in, we, there's a contracted rate across District 3, which is from Franklin County down to us, which is $225 a call. So we will bill, it's still our patient, we bill the patient. Depending on whether or not, how much the paramedic actually did, sometimes we can bill at a higher rate, more times usually we can't. It's just 225 bucks out of our pocket because we're bringing that, we're bringing in that paramedic. The other time, when this happens very infrequently, is when we have, we, technically, we can run a crew without an AEMT as a crew chief. There have been times when we felt that it was more beneficial to have us in service and have a BLS provider in the back. So if we have a BLS provider and we actually just need ALS support as an AEMT, we have in the past, not very often, maybe once or twice a year, have called on Charlotte for one of their AMTs to jump on the call. And if that case, they, sometimes they've billed us and sometimes they've not. Agencies like Middlebury, if we're going south and looking for a paramedic, they actually have just decided they're not going to bill us for it. And we say thank you very much. Charlotte, we, so we pay out to Charlotte, Richmond, and occasionally Colchester, which would be the three agencies in the north that will send a paramedic south to intercept with us.
What is your total annual budget?
For an, from an income standpoint, or from an, so for our income, 2018, it's $422,000. And for our expenses, at 382. And so that, the difference between the two is that 40, about that $40,000 that we try to, this year, we're trying to budget so that we make $40,000 that would be going into the ambulance replacement fund.
Is it your tendency to keep three ambulances all the time?
Another excellent question and one that we go back and forth all the time on. I think that the last time we bought the ambulance, we did some really big soul searching on whether or not we could afford that, that second ambulance. Probably Sarah and I even have different, different ideas about this. So I don't want to discount your question, but it's still an open question within the organization. I'll just say like right now, we have one ambulance that is completely out of service because of some issues with a, just mechanical issues. We have an accident that happened on Sunday night, right, in which we were able to run two rigs to that, to that call. In the case in which we were down to only two rigs and one out of mechanical, in that case, we would not have had the second rig and we would have had to bring in someone from Bristol or Charlotte. And I'll tell you, that's a pretty solid argument for continuing with, with three, three ambulances. From a treasurer standpoint, would have gotten rid of it a long time ago. But from, from, from on the medical side, it's, once you have something, it's pretty hard to go, to go back. We might be at a point, at some point where we have to revisit that.
Well, it just seems in my, you know, logically, that if you can't get three teams together, there's no sense of keeping the third ambulance.
We do, and this might be where Brian and I might disagree maybe. We do contract, sort of contract out a third ambulance throughout the year for events. So we'll use that third truck per se to, we've done coverage for races at Devil's Bowl, where we contract through them to pay. So that's what that third, the oldest ambulance is typically used for. So that still leaves us two ambulances in town. We never leave ourselves uncovered. If we had to, then Devil's Bowl wouldn't get covered, our town would be priority. So we do use it in that aspect to make monies on the side to help support as well. But sometimes if you look at it, we could potentially some days do without the third, the third truck. But it's like giving up a piece that's always been there, you know? It's a hard, it's a hard one to go back and forth.
Any other questions to the council?
Nothing on that side of the table. It would affect the two of you guys to be browbeating me here.
Yes, bud?
Just real quick. Brad, maybe you can tell me, I hate to speak to the back of your head. In any event, a couple of questions. Have you polled formally or informally the companies where the individual rescue squad members are employed to see what the sense of commitment there is there? Now where I'm going with that is, this is in regard to your membership. If companies express even a real subliminal reluctance, make it difficult for folks to leave their workbench headed the drop of a hat, which is essential to your function, even if they don't intend to be resistant or reluctant to support it, there may be a perceived notion. My point is, have you polled your squad members to see what the level of associate or level of commitment for their companies is? And that may have some impact on recruiting. And number two has to do with your, your extra ambulance. You have, I sort of got a sense that you are touching on making it available almost as a floater. Not every squad, Charlotte, Bristol, Middlebury, Virgin's, always needs a third, but frequently needs a third. If there is one that's available, commonly a floater among the four, would it make sense to kind of promote that whole thing? Now, it doesn't have to be a floater from just Virgin's, it could be from any of the other three. If there's a floater available that you can call on, you get the whole squad, whatever you want to populate that particular crew with, could be part of the on-call thing, on-call concept of that. Once in a while, we need a third rig, even if it's just for coverage, because your other two rigs are out and, you know, they're split up. Has that been really looked at at all, either one? You know, the survey and basically having a third floater for the four squads?
Mary, would you like me to just answer that? So UTC killed us.
You know?
So I'll, I'll be, I'll answer this question. The, you know, as the, as the owner of the organization that's next door to us, on the next door to us, has changed, become more corporate, that has had a distinct disadvantage in allowing employees to be able to run calls. There's, there's no sugar coating about it. I understand it, I get it, but there's, it's, it's been huge. It's been huge. So, so to answer the question of whether we've polled members, so number one is, so we do have a radius of response that we need to our areas. We are, we officially on call now at 6 o'clock? Okay. Is it like at 6? Pretty close?
I'll probably be there.
All right. So.
I'll probably drop out.
The, so there's only so many businesses within that particular area, and there's even fewer employees that are within, within those businesses. During the interview process, we certainly asked the person whether or not they can, you know, they would be able to respond with something like that. I can think of really very few employees, other than maybe the city of Virgin's, that allows their, their, their fire department members to be able to respond that would allow that. I'll put myself in the example, I work at Basin Harbor, have worked there for almost 30 years. And, but, you know, could I respond, am I right on the, the edge of being able to respond? Yes. Would I put my employer in that situation where I would have to leave at that, at any time? I don't know if I'd feel comfortable doing that. And I think that that's the, I think that's probably the consensus that is the relationship between most employers and employees. It's got to be a pretty special case that allows for that type of flexibility. And we have not found, have not found that combination. But it is certainly something that we discuss with our, our members. And again, going back to the crew chief, right? So that one position and somewhat the drivers is the piece that really need, we only need two people in the rig, right? Everyone else is kind of extra. We'd love to have them, but you know, in order to get the ambulance out the door, we need a crew chief and a driver for sure. I am one of four volunteer crew chiefs that we have. That's how that, that's, gives you an understanding, that's exactly how desperate it is when I'm only one of them. That's really desperate.
We take a week in.
So we have, so those four, I can guarantee you that those people, those, those crew chiefs and the drivers that we have, we hoard them, we beat down pretty hard to see whether or not they can pick up those shifts and whether or not we can work with their employees to be able to do something, have not found a great deal of reluctance. But I think the real elephant in the question is UTC, huge mass of people that we could be working on and just, that's just gone, that's gone. As far as the, the question on the, on the floater, the ambulances, there have been times in which the Middlebury, mainly Bristol or Rescue, who'd only have two ambulances, have had one of their ambulances down and they've asked to utilize one of ours. And we, in a good nature, have allowed them to be able to utilize that. We have, we have had preliminary conversations with Charlotte and Middlebury about the sharing of resources and members that maybe allow for a little bit more cross-pollination of people within the agencies. And I think our, most of our effort had been really with Charlotte. They've undergone some leadership changes. Middlebury has had significant turmoil, I guess you could say, in the last, you know, in the last couple of years. And I think they're really in a position really to get into that level. But we are, we're looking at that, very seriously looking at that type of options. If nothing else, just to increase our pool of people to be able to even ask. They can still say no, but the odds of someone saying yes when the pool is greater is, is to be more productive.
Okay, well, I think we'll move on if there's no other questions. And you have to go at 6, right? You're going duty at 6?
Duty at 6, but we're within the, so if we were working for the city of Virgin's, we could be working here, you could be paying us, and then we got a call and then we would do that.
Well, one thing, Ryan and I chatted just briefly before the meeting, and you know, Sarah had submitted a letter to, stated March 21, which in essence is not a notice of, of non-renewal, it's a notice of renegotiation. And the contract that was signed in 2014 makes reference to 16, 60 days in advance of that term. You know, it's either, either party notice not to renew or a renegotiation. So that was the intent of Sarah's letter. And so the, the contract that I printed was a fiscal year contract, July 1, July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019, at the 8 2018 to June 30, 2019, at the $8 per capita, which is an increase from $650 to, to eight. Brian, when Brian talked to me late in the afternoon, he said that their contracts, now they want to shift them to a January type of basis. And just kind of selfishly here, all right, it's just easier for City Hall to have contracts that run July 1 to June 30. Okay? So selfishly, I can just tell you from an accounting standpoint, the, the accountant in the room would prefer that we continue on that same July 1 to June 30. We're obligated to pay that bill within 60 days of signing, 60 days of the year. You bill it, we cut a check, we're done. So if the rescue squad is, in essence, imposing upon us a change of the contract period, let me just tell you from a, you know, from a cash flow standpoint, I'm a little confused about the transition. Like, are we going to be getting a bill for six months and then, and then get a bill for a year? So from a cash flow standpoint, we end up paying for 18 months within our fiscal year. Now, there is a way for us to code a portion of a bill to prepaid expenses, all right? I'm not going to be working here to pay attention to that. Somebody's got to pay attention to that. So let me just tell you, if, if, if there was some area of compromise, I, I really would prefer that, relative to the city of Virgin's, that it be maintained on a fiscal year basis. Now, if, if in fact there is some issue about maintaining fairness amongst the municipalities, I certainly understand that. If, if Bridport is paying $8, and we're paying $8, and they start paying $8 in January, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be paying $8 starting in the following July. Now, that's just some real simple math. But contractually, it's better for us, it's just better for us and easier for us from accounting standpoint to keep our, keep our contract on a fiscal year basis.
So we understand that, our, but our, I guess, we, if there wasn't imposing, I guess that is what we would be doing, is that we really feel pretty strongly about the January 1 for all the towns. If there was an issue with a cash flow standpoint, which I do understand, and, and the city of Virgin's needed, you know, a couple of months in between for that first year, we would, we could certainly, you know, we could certainly hold off and give you all, you know, 90 days or 120 days to be able to, be able to pay that.
Well, the cash, the cash flow is, is pretty, is pretty simple, all right?
I, I totally get that, and, and so I'd be more willing to, we could either, we could put an amendment to that contract, or we can have a gentle persons agreement on, on how we could do that either.
So, I mean, I guess the thing is, I mean, there's, you know, one cure, you know, if there, it was a six month, if there was a six-month contract that covered July 1 to December 31st with a compensation at whatever this $8, and then you have another contract that kicks in for calendar year 2019, if that contract was set up with, with two payments a year, all right, then, then we've written you, we've written you checks accordingly to your fiscal year, all right? So, but again, you know, I will tell you that any time that we pay a, City Hall pays a contract that crosses the fiscal year, we end up having to code it into a, into a prepaid expense. Somebody has to pay attention to that, code it as a prepaid expense so that it doesn't affect your fund balance. So, and it's just easier, all right, to have the contract comply or have the billing correspond, but not, not having to code things off to prepay.
So our mission is to do it January 1 for both the billing and the contract, and we would, all we'd be billing here in the next 60 days for July 1 to December 31st would just be those, those six months at that, at that $650. And then you wouldn't owe anything until after January. You wouldn't, you wouldn't go to the $8 until after January of 2019.
So that's what other towns, and if you will, or that's what others are paying, is they're paying $650 through?
Everyone is, everyone, including Virgin's, is $650 through, through December 31st of 2018. And to be honest with you, we kind of took it a little bit on the nose because of the situation we have with Virgin, so, because we could have been saying, well, we'll just start some of these other towns on January 1st, 2018, right? And then let Virgin's catch up. We decide, you know what? We just, we're going to make it fair for everyone. It's $650 all the way through 2018, and everyone starts off fresh, 1-1-19.
Okay, what I'd like to do is move on, on some of the agenda items, and we'll be, this is the first agenda item when we do get to the business, but we're not there yet. So let's move on to approval of minutes. I need a motion to.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Of May 8th. Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Has it been seconded? Somebody second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's seconded. Any, any changes or amendments to the minutes?
I just have a couple. Under Conference Room Project, Kristen Benton's name is misspelled. It's T-I-N, and there are three references to her name. Then, under Swimming Pool Capital Purchases Process, the very last sentence, "Everyone was comfortable going forward with the installation of hot water." We're missing a word there. And that was all.
Yeah, I thought that your new, you said new facet, but I thought it meant faucet. I wasn't sure what that was.
Facet. Okay. So that's in the same line.
I have a couple. Anybody else before I get to mine? In the section, Green Mountain Power Corporation, partial assignment, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, sixth line down, it begins at city manager. I think that sentence should say city manager, Holly, advised, or say the city manager, either one.
Yeah, I think it should say Holly, yeah.
Okay. And if we go to Conference Room Project Lobby Doors, one, two, three, fourth line down, it's the last line, actually. I think the, the flow of the sentence would be better if it said, "The Friends of the Virgin's Opera House Prefer," not "Prefers." And that's all I have. Anybody have, any?
I think the S on "prefer" and S, the S stays, right, Shannon? Friends of Virgin's Opera House is one entity?
Yes.
All right, and so the S stays.
Okay.
My English colleague in the back of the room rang, sorry. We deal with this all the time.
Okay, anything else? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it is passed. All right, now we go on to citizens' comments. Do we have any citizen comments?
We're curious about where the school resource officer issue is at this point in time.
Well, it's, right now, it's not an issue with the city council. But it probably will at some point be an issue with the city council.
Go ahead.
I did have a discussion the other day with, with Stephanie Taylor and Joanne Canning. And Joanne had suggested that there be a joint meeting of the council and the school board to discuss that issue. So I guess it's our pleasure to initiate that if we choose to do so.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we go on to Business 5A, which is the Virgin's Area Rescue Squad Service Agreement. So I'm not sure whether we would be motioning the, that agreement that we have there, because there's some stuff that has to be done for the agreement, right?
Well, Brian sent me a, I got a revised one on some shared drive. I, I thought I hit the print button, but anyway, all that it's, that one, it isn't about the transition agreement. I think that they, we do have to have some kind of transition in there in billing so that we understand what we're, you know, so that they correspond.
Mm-hmm. So we really can't authorize a, the actual agreement? I guess we can, we can authorize conceptually what the agreement should be. Is that what we're aiming at?
So, I mean, as I understand it, you know, whether or not it's a six-month agreement and a 12-month agreement, or an 18-month agreement that makes reference to these renewals, all right, it really might be easier, it might be easier to have, if their intent is to have a calendar year agreement that rolls over, all right, then we do need, you know, some kind of a, a very simple addendum to the existing agreement that extends the existing agreement for six months and states the compensation. And that's, that's the simple. So.
And then we would do a new agreement?
And it would be a new agreement that would cover the period from January 1 to December 31st of 2019.
Okay, so I guess then I would need a motion to do an addendum to the existing agreement for the six-month period?
At $650 per capita. Pro-rated, obviously.
Right. And, and then at some point in that six months, we will be dealing with another agreement?
I'm going to say motion.
Okay, it's been moved, and any discussion on that? If no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is passed. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, I am Sky, Green, Virgin's Laundry.
By CK Outside Consumption Permit. So I'll need a motion to approve this outside consumption permit?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded? Okay.
So just so you know, back in March or so, the Virgin's Laundry by CK was actually on your, on your list of authorizing outside seating agreements, of which I, I prepared, produced, and signed, all right? So that, if you were like wondering how were they out there before tonight, the answer is they had an agreement to be out there, but they shouldn't have been serving any, any booze outside. Not that I'm paying that close attention to it. But anyway, just, just so that you know, you already acted on an outs, the outside seating agreement back in, back in March.
But not the consumption.
But not the alcoholic consumption permit, that's correct.
So I assume all of this conforms to what the liquor control needs and so on?
Yes, it's what the prior Virgin's Laundry had, only they had like setting adjacent to the storefront was Platform A and Platform B. He's just doing Platform B in front of his space that he leases.
I think he's doing A, I think he's doing A and B. He's not doing C and D.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if we don't have any questions about this permit, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's passed. Discussion resulting from the skate park site visit. Where do we want to go with this one? We had quite a bit of discussion about it. I'll, I'll say that I had on my mayor's report the aspect of, should we be creating a recreation committee? And I suppose I can talk about that a little earlier, because it might impact what we do there. It's, it's been through two mayors now, talking about having a recreation committee restored. We had one when Joe Klopstein was here. It was a fairly active recreation committee, and when he left, it left. So I, I think some committee of that sort, I, I don't know the exact composition of what it should be, but probably is something would be helpful to have. And maybe what we do with the skateboard park could be a kind of a subdivision, specialty subdivision of the whole committee that concentrates more on the park. I don't, I'm not quite sure how we should do that. But my opinion is, is that the park probably needs some sort of an oversight group to get things moving as far as, you know, let's get the maintenance done, some of the suggestions that were made tonight about changes to it, and move along with those, see what it would cost, see how we could do that. Some group should be doing that, and certainly shouldn't be the councils as a whole. So what's your pleasure?
Basically, all, all of those assets, you know, whether it's the tennis court, or the skateboard park, or anything else that would come under that umbrella, I mean, if they're a city asset, we ought to be doing something with them. Because assets that are not looked after tend to deteriorate physically and otherwise. And so, you know, when you look at, when you look at the pool, the pool is a shining example of how things should work. And I mean, obviously, the, the scope involved and the use is obviously greater than, you know, the skateboard park, or the tennis courts, or walking trails, or whatever it is that you have. I don't recall the number, but I believe that it was fairly substantial, you know, the, the grant money that went into it to construct it. And there's been lim, very, very limited maintenance of it. And it's just a situation of, you know, things like that, if they're not maintained, they tend to deteriorate. I mean, like I said, I went over in advance of the meeting and looked at it. I think that at least for a year or two, you know, Matt would probably weigh in on this too, that, you know, at the very least, I mean, it needs a coat of arbor coat on the exposed wood surfaces to preserve them. Eventually, it's going to need re-sheathing. And from a, from a liability standpoint, I think that, I didn't see anything to me. And I mean, I'm not a, you know, saying that I'm a, a, a risk management professional, but I didn't see anything that jumped out to me as glaringly obvious as far as a liability that jumped right out in terms of the physical piece of it. But I would say that that, what you're describing makes sense, that there's a committee that's charged with oversight of those assets as a whole, and then each individual entity ought, and it doesn't need to be 15 people, you know? I mean, it's relatively small. I, I'd volunteer to work on that. And I think that, I think that it's important to, you know, if we're going to have it, we ought to do something with it.
Well, we'll tell you that from a, the, say, from a safety standpoint, David, I want to say, a couple of years ago, the league, as a part of their normal course of business, goes around and inspects certain things, and I can tell you that skate park gets, get inspected more often than fire stations, all right? And, and I can tell you that, if you notice, there's a relatively new sign with posted rules up on the side of the warming hut. That was a result of that visit. There used to be a half-torn-down, half the letters removed thing, and so that signage was taken care of. And this visit didn't, it was very different from back when the skate park was originally constructed, relative to required supervision.
Sure.
Gated type thing. Those are, those are behind us. But that, you know, the signage, this is, you know, obviously is up to snuff, but, you know, obviously, there's, you know, there certainly is some painting that needs to be done down there, and a decision needs to be made relative to that, relative to the moving of that wall. It's not a, it's not a simple task. It's not like the crew's going to go down there and do that, you know, you know, on Thursday afternoon. That's a proj, it's a project.
There's some expense there, too.
Yeah.
Well, I think that relative to dealing with a skate park is, is, is kind of more immediate, and, and we're really getting into the season for it, and we should be jumping on it as, as quickly as we could to do whatever we can, at least in the beginning. So if Dave, if you wanted to kind of take the lead with what's going to happen with the skate park and, and, and see where we can take it in the interim, until a larger committee is created to deal with all facilities, then that would be great, and unless the council has any objections to that. I always like a volunteer that's going to do a lot of work. going to do a lot of work.
I, I can, I can come up, I mean, I can work with Mel in terms of coming up with some numbers, what it would take to move that structure, but I, I'd agree with Mel. I mean, that's, that's not an easy thing, you know? And anybody thinks it is, is wrong. But, uh, you know, initially, um, you know, it's, it's really just going around, and I gave it a cursory look over, just looking at it in terms of the structural integrity of the equipment that's there so that it's, doesn't become a liability. But at the very least, I mean, it needs, uh, you know, you're talking a few gallons of arbor coat, oil-based preservative to kind of help limit the deterioration that's occurring.
Okay.
I'm not sure if you heard the comment that, that they made as we were walking away, but that wall does not have to remain that high when put inside the tennis court. It could be, you know, even with the, with the gate.
I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, you know, I, I can hit a tennis ball over the net. I, I'm kind of struggling to a degree with how that works, having that wall in the tennis court, because to me, I mean, the purpose of that wall is, it's, it's, it's an additional place for somebody to go hit a tennis ball against. I'm, I'm not sure how that's going to work if there's somebody in there playing tennis, you know? If it's, I mean, maybe if it's adjacent to it, but I, I can't see somebody standing in the tennis court and, you know, playing around people. I mean, I...
Just a quick question. I hope, it's not too much of a non sequitur, but Lee did bring up our relationship with Northones, and I know we've had some back and forth with that relationship. Do we see them being a potential resource for labor?
Um, I, I assume yes. I have met with the new contractors, um, and they're coming back in, some of the people from the main company are coming back in to meet with people. They seem to be very eager to get involved with the community. Um, I'd, I'd say just, and this was a very short meeting, but, but, um, I'd say much more eager than the previous operator. And, um, so I think there'll, there'll be some real opportunity to do something with them.
I, I, I can go ahead and, and reach out to them. I mean, that's, that's good news. I mean, if they, if, if we can't get them to pay us like they used to, I mean, get something out of them, you know?
Okay. Then I guess we'll move on to Bixby Library requests for serving of alcohol. You have...
Or alcohol consumption ordinance require, relative to the library, which is owned by the city, is something that I do not have the authority to deal with. And so, that's why this, uh, the serving of alcohol at that city-owned facility requires city council action.
I'll make the motion to approve the application.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, any questions on, on this? Actually, it's relatively routine stuff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to proposed FY 2018 recycling budget.
So, I handed out, uh, a couple of things. One pertains to E and the other pertains to F. And, uh, the email about the recycling budget, I can tell you, I'm, I am still stunned since 2:06 PM. Hi Cheryl, how, how fitting.
I think I have some more to prepare.
Yeah. So, let, let me tell you, I'm, uh, I am, uh, I am very discouraged about this, uh, and, and I actually have not completed my work, all right? And, and there, and there was, there was one follow-up email. I wrote back to, just so that you know, I wrote back to Randall and said, uh, that, given that this is a 47% increase, we currently pay $6,000, you saw the bill in the, in the warrants here, we pay $6,087.72. And so, this represents a 47% increase, uh, in, in the recycling program costs, which obviously, uh, gets funded through contracts with four other towns. I can't write that letter, uh, to the four other towns. I don't, I don't know how I could, how I'm going to be able to do that. And it ends up, um, you know, forcing us to really take a look at this situation, all right? And, uh, the one thing that I did not have time to do, because in the past, when, when Casella says, "Our cost to process has increased $81 per ton over the last 12 months," my, one of the things that I ran out of time to do today is, what, what Randall is referring to when he says, "Our cost to process has increased $81 per ton," that's, he literally means that. And that's because the materials are brought to the Rutland Murph Materials Recovery Facility, which is a Casella-run facility. And so, they say that their costs have gone up $81. So, what I do is I get in touch with the Chittenden County Solid Waste District and find out what their out-of-district tipping fee is for recycling. And I can tell you, the last, the last fee, last time I checked, uh, it was $21.50 per ton, uh, on July of 2015. So, I'm not done talking to this gentleman, all right? But I can tell you, the market for materials is, I, I don't think he's blowing smoke here. I think it's absolutely true. And, uh, so I sent Cheryl an email, that's what I do, when I end up with a solid waste problem, I just email Cheryl and say...
At, at the transfer station, I think.
Fifty for recyclables.
A ton, yeah. But we're also looking at, that's not really covering the cost.
Yeah. So, I mean, I have some ideas. I don't have enough time to, uh, to really correct this thing. If I had a magic wand, uh, for this, uh, I, I can tell you, I, I think that there's a, there are many residents of Vergens that love our recycling center. I mean, they like to be able to bring it down there. There's no charge. Uh, you know, if you want to tip Casellas, you can tip Casellas, but there is no charge. I really think that for that percentage of our residents that use it, it's, it's very much appreciated. However, when you start doing the math, and when you start doing the math on this thing and figure out how much money it's costing, uh, the city through the budget, and then calculate, calculate your taxes, and there really is some, there is some unfairness going on out here. For instance, uh, businesses, businesses are paying property taxes, and they're not using the recycling center. And so, businesses are, are paying, many businesses are paying twice, once for their property taxes and once for the service when they pick it up through their dumpster. Residents that aren't using the center, you know, are paying for it twice, all right? Once, uh, through their taxes, all right, for, for not using it, and then they're paying again when they're paying Casella, even though it's, it may not be charged separately, believe me, it's, it's, it's in your bill, all right? So, the, when this thing, when it, when it, when the, when it cost us $20,000 to run the recycling center, nobody really cared, all right? But when you start talking about, uh, $100,000 to run the recycling center, you know, you, you, uh, you don't just say, "Yeah, okay, good, just send me a bill, we'll cut you a check." This is a, this is a real problem. And, uh, I, I don't know, it really needs some immediate, uh, a, action. You know, I can tell you, I know that if the city council said, "All right, take it out of the budget," everybody's going to fend for themselves, all right? Well, you know, I know, I, I know my phones. Actually, I'm just going to tell them to call Cheryl. So, anyway, I can, I can, I can tell you, it's really, it's a, this is a real problem. Uh, and, you know, I, you know, what's, what's a little bit too, too bad here, I don't know how the other towns feel. I think they really appreciate, you know, all of the work that we do for them, all right? And, uh, you don't hear from them. But I'll tell you, you know, if you, if you close that off, uh, oh, yeah, yeah. So, I, so anyway, I don't have any, I don't, I'm, I'm not ready to do anything today, all right? But I can tell you, this clock, this clock is ticking big time, all right? Cheryl has some crystal ball here.
Um, I, I've been thinking about it since about 2:00.
Two, uh, two, uh, yeah. Two oh seven.
Yeah, exactly.
I got that at 2:06.
Yeah.
I emailed you at 2:07.
And, and I've already, uh, kind of sent out some, some, uh, requests from, from Terry and the staff down at Addison County. So, after giving this a lot of thought, I, I would like to make a suggestion that it is very complicated, right? It's very complicated and involves, it involves five towns. Doing something drastic is, I, I don't think, um, the way to go, but I do understand the dilemma. And, and I agree that I think it's time for a change. It's time for a change for a number of reasons. But, um, I, I would suggest that perhaps putting in place, um, something like a closure plan, you know, like we do when there's a landfill. So, I would suggest, as an option, is to maybe take, uh, have a, a committee put together or just maybe someone from each town and someone from the district to get together and talk about what the options could be. Because I, I agree with you, that the way that it's been funded and financed and operated by Vergens, I think is not sustainable, given the fact that things are changing. We are trying to put a couple of things in place, uh, at, at the transfer station, Addison County as a whole. So, uh, last week, we just approved a couple of changes, um, but they're going to take some time. So, right now, the, the transfer station, um, in Middlebury is bound by their host agreement with the town of Middlebury that they cannot accept bagged trash and recycling from residents. It's only for haulers. But we're going to be changing that. We just agreed to start those conversations with the town of Middlebury to expand our services. But that, again, takes some time. We also, uh, approved the development of a regional drop-off, which would be another drop-off other than the transfer station, similar to Chittenden County, that everyone in Addison County would have an option to go to, and it would be, you know, we would charge what it costs for that service. So, the difference between Casella and our municipality is that we're just trying to cover our costs. We're not in it to make a profit. Casella really likes to make a profit, and, uh, that's the difference between us. So, we're, we are already kind of starting that planning process to try to help those communities that are struggling right now with the same issue. But it's going to take some time. And, uh, sure, if you, if you did this, uh, $9,000 a month, you know, for over 12 months, that is almost $100,000. But, but if you have something, um, a plan in place, like say, okay, in three months, we'd like to close it down, and then have those discussions with the other towns and talk about the options, I think that might be, uh, I think that would be a smart way to go, to plan for that closure instead of just stopping at cold turkey. Because there are options, you know? We, we need to talk to CJ, CNJ, find out what their capacity is in the same location. Maybe they could handle just Vergens, but without the other towns, you know? You know, maybe it's a prime spot that somebody else would like to rent from us, you know? It's a possibility we could turn it into a money-making event instead of something that we're paying. I think there's a lot of other options, but I think we need to sit down and have that discussion in a kind of a thoughtful manner.
So, one of, let me just, my reaction to a committee, I, I have a problem with a committee, and I can tell you, my feeling is, is that the, the players on this committee already exist. The, the Addison County Solid Waste Management District has representatives from, from every town, all right? And, and there is a rep, there better be a representative from Walttham, Pantin, Ferrisburg, and Addison right now that would, uh, you know, so I, what I would, what I would like Cheryl to take away from this would hopefully be for the solid waste district to take the lead in, in gathering up those five, I mean, I, both of us can go, I'm your, I'm your alternate, but I mean...
Happy to set up a meeting that we...
Yeah. And I think that needs to be done ASAP. The, the problem that we have is, is I really, yeah, I, I, I think really, you know, closing that, closing that down on, on June 30th, uh, is, you know, we're just talking about complete chaos. But I can tell you, I really think that, that, uh, I feel as if, and it, and it actually is over 100, 100,000, it's $8,968.77, so when, when you do the math, it's, it's over 100G's.
Well, you're the math guy.
Yeah, I am. So, anyway, I, you know, I don't have a problem with dealing with this. If this is the deal, and I can, and let's say that I go to Chittenden and I talk a minute, and I can't, I can't get this guy, don't forget, if you read this thing carefully, it's, it's 89.68 headed for something else, okay? If you, when you read it carefully, all right? Yeah, it makes reference, like if it goes down 10, then you can save 400 bucks. I know what the next sentence is, okay? All right? All right? So, one of the things is I really feel that unfortunately, we really should only be looking at a three-month deal here, you know? Sending out a contract, you know, sending out a contract to the towns to say, "Listen, this is what we're faced with. We do a three-month deal, and hopefully, the future's going to be a little clearer here very quickly," all right? And three months might be ambitious, but sometimes people do their best work when your back is up against the wall, uh, because if you do six months, we'll be, we'll be saying, "Man, we can't meet on Christmas, we'll, we'll push this into January." So, this, and I don't know how the hell I'm, how the heck we're going to budget this thing, okay? And I can assure you this, I can tell you this, Ferrisburg, Pantin, Walttham, and Addison, I can guarantee you, they didn't budget a 47% increase in their recycling with Vergens, okay? So, they don't even know about this, about this problem.
Do you do this based on 12 months? Like, how, where is it in the budget?
It's just a fiscal year. It's a July, it's a contract, July 1 to June 30. We have a contract with them, just, with the towns.
So, you would, you would normally have a, this...
12-month contract.
In the budget for 12 months.
July 1 to June 30, that's correct.
A certain amount of time, I mean, a certain amount of money?
Yeah.
So, if you took a, a similar amount of money, just as a suggestion, and say, "Okay, when that runs out, that's when it closes," knowing...
Would you sign something like that? Probably, yeah. I doubt it.
No.
Anyway, I, you know...
It's true, there's a lot of details.
We're not going to be able to settle this thing tonight, so I'm, I'm here just giving you bad news, all right? And I, and I think that really, the towns need to get together very quickly, uh, because I, you know, I don't know that, you know, sure, we could go it alone, all right? But I can tell you, going it alone doesn't change the numbers either, all right? Because basically, now you're paying 100% of an already inflated bill. So, your, your bill is lower, but you don't have anybody subsidize, not necessarily subsidizing, but paying any proportion, yeah? So, so that's, so, sorry about that. It's my only apology of the night, though, Lynn, I'm telling you.
One more.
Okay. 5F, proposed FY 2018 Fire Department Revenue Budget.
So, at the last, uh, at, uh, a meeting or so ago, you all approved the expenditure budget. And, uh, I, I do want to just talk to you just a little bit about the expenditure budget because Joan is, has worked all day long today, pretty much Joan, right? Dealing with this bond. We're submitting our bond application. And then Jim Brewer and I have been on the phone, and he's been on the phone with the truck, the, the truck building company, because the way the bond situation works is you put your application in for the $500,000, and you're bundled up with the, all of the rest of the towns in Vermont, and they actually close on those bonds, and, uh, the money is available to you on July 15th. Well, I don't need $500,000 in July 15th because the truck isn't going to arrive, uh, is going to arrive 270 days after I sign the contract in March, which is sometime in November. So, it makes you end up saying, "Well, what, why don't we think about the next round?" All right? And because the way that it works is that if we, if Joan, if we submit this tomorrow, if I drive this package to Burlington tomorrow, and we're in, we're in, and, and what happens is, is that even if we don't need the money, we have to pay interest from July 15th to November 15th on money that we don't need and a truck that we don't have, all right? So, that's the deal. That doesn't sit very well with anybody, all right? But then on the other hand, if we wait, and even though Joan worked all day today, it's work, if she does it today or does it in January, it's just work. It's just work, okay? So, uh, yeah, she's, yeah, she's either racing around today or like six months ahead, right? Right? So, you could wait until January and put it, put it in, and then that money becomes available to you on February 15th. Now... Now, obviously, if the truck arrives, I got to cut something, I won't be here, but somebody's got to cut a check for half a million dollars. And you either do it with cash that we have kicking around here or you have to do a bond anticipation note. So the way that I left it today was to say, Jim, get in touch with your sales rep, find out where this thing is at. If they are, you know, the contract says delivery within 270 days, you know, everybody knows that that could be mean 305. It might mean 213. It's something. So let's get a good handle on that. We need to know that tomorrow morning, all right? So then we can proceed. And I can tell you, you know, it really, yeah, there's a potential $4,000 savings, but it's only, you're just going to pay it on the other end. There really isn't any savings here. So the point is, is that if we do delay this, then the budget that you approve for the fire department is really for, could be $4,000 higher than it needed to be, as it turns out, if we go in that direction and we don't know that yet. So that's about the expense side. On the revenue side, what, I got all of the numbers from Ferrisburg and so we have good, solid numbers here relative to the portion of their town that, that we cover and that's indicated here. And the real, the real decision, if you will, of the board tonight is to determine the amount of cash carryover put into this revenue budget to offset the 198,650. So let me just tell you that on June 30th, 2017, you ended the year with just under $40,000 in cash, that's 39 and some change. We used $10,000 of that 39 plus, all right? So there is this $29,000 cushion. So in theory, when we get to June 30th, if, if the revenues are what they are, and they are, because they're all contracts, but if the expenses are right on budget, then you will end, you will end fiscal year 18 with 29,000 and some change because you used 10 of the 39. So the, so if you go on that assumption, all right, and I really think that we're going to be under budget, but that's just me. So if you go with that assumption, I think that it is safe to use $20,000, all right? Of the, to, for the revenue budget. You probably could go 25, if you wanted, wanted to. But one of the things, the reality is, is if you start thinking, okay, this, when this truck arrives and we got this $500,000 debt, there's a $25,000 per year new principal bond payment that's going to be staring in your face. So in part, part of the strategy here is to, is to not do, not do this, but to have the contracts and the city share to be somewhat smooth. So there's not a right answer here, but my, but I would recommend, you know, that 20,000 is, is a, an appropriate number, given our fund balance.
You need a motion?
So I need, because, yes, I do. And so that then I can, we're going to finish our, in our work, so then we can build the towns. That's what I need to do.
So I need a motion to use $20,000 out of fund balance?
I'll make said motion.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion on it? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. All right, report of the City Manager Search Committee.
Okay. Well, after several weeks of hard work, we wound up with only one candidate to present to the City Council for interview and it was the consensus of our committee that that would be inappropriate. So we are recommending that we continue our search. I have a lengthy conversation with VLCT. They have submitted a proposal to assist us with that. It's a pretty extensive and comprehensive proposal and a lot of the work that they propose to do, we've already done. We have finalized job descriptions. We have a really good sense of the qualifications that we require. They will, however, be able to focus in on a pool of candidates that we did not necessarily have the ability to reach. And so it is our recommendation that we proceed with that. Their proposal is for $4,350 to $6,850. I'm happy to share this with anyone who'd like to read it. It's a lot of pages. It's a lot of pages.
I'll move that we go ahead with a budget not to exceed $6,800 with VLCT.
I'll second that motion. It's been moved and seconded. The, the immediate question in my mind is where we get the money? And I guess I'll ask Mel what, whether he has any thoughts along that. I mean, we can, we can literally establish a line and deficit spend it and hopefully make up for it elsewhere in the budget to pay it off or we can take it from someplace if there is someplace to take it. So...
Right, and there, there's not necessarily a right answer here because, you know, and just as, you know, in the police department, when we came to the City Council about the administrative assistant, you know, we, because I really wanted to keep that money separated from police salaries and so it is a salary line item. And so in that instance, you know, I encourage the council to authorize the creation of a line item with no money in it, knowing that it would not spend more than 1,600. In this instance, we're not talking about wages. And so I, I think that, I think that if you just simply code it to miscellaneous, all right? It's, we budget 1,000, we've spent 400. Obviously, this thing is, you know, assuming that most, if not all of this money is expended by the end of the year, that's what's going to happen to that line item. It's going to go over budget by three, you know, three, $4,000. You know, you know, I don't want to say that Joan and I don't care about the administrative budget because it is, it is what it is, you know? Believe me, if we need, if we need envelopes to mail bills, we'll probably buy envelopes. That's what we'll be doing. So there really, you know, you know, we're always careful, you know. I will tell you that sometimes when we get to the end, towards the end of the fiscal year, we actually do buy envelopes, to be honest with you, like...
We are involved.
Okay, so, you know, so, so like in the, for instance, if you look at, you haven't paid for them yet, Joan, is the fact of the matter, because you put them on a charge card. So the point is, if you look at a line item, 1, 7, 10, 20, Supplies and Equipment Administration, we budgeted $10,000, we spent 6,800. And that does not include the charge bill that's going to be paid next month, which are those envelopes. So in essence, when this thing kind of happens, you know, but we're, we just don't buy anything, all right? We just, we just, you know, we absolutely buy essentials and, you know, it'll, it'll be what it'll be, so, you know.
I would also add that VLCT is prepared to help us find an interim manager, should we find that we need to do that, which does sort of relieve some of the pressure because we do have to have a manager on July 25th. So they're willing to help with that as well.
As an appendage to that, we are also looking for a zoning administrator. There is a search committee in place. We are meeting later this week. There will probably also need to be some expense for advertising on that end. Certainly, I don't envision it being as large as it is for city manager, but I just wanted to make you aware of all of that. Yes.
That's one thing I don't get in my report.
That's all right. Thank you.
I think, I think that, you know, and I've talked to the few of you about this, that it's kind of an uphill battle and we're obviously not going to find another Mel Holly, particularly for the money that we're able to pay. I mean, that's just the reality of the fact that we're here in Virgin's, Vermont, as opposed to, you know, New Jersey, Connecticut or Massachusetts. And so when you're looking at, when you're looking at a pool of applicants, I mean, that in my mind is probably the most limiting factor, is the money. And there isn't anything that we're going to do about that because we're, we can pay what we can pay. Just briefly, Jeff, can you sum up what it is that VLCT will do for that money? Excuse me.
What, what the biggest advantage they will bring is the ability to call Joe Smith at the town of Dover and say, there's a position in Virgin's, are you interested? They have those kinds of relationships that will really be helpful, that we were not able to tap into. They also have a very, a much broader net of advertising resources than we were able, than we chose to dive into. Many of them are somewhat expensive. So, and they have contracts that, that we don't have. So they really bring a lot more administrative tools to the table as well.
Okay.
I, I will, it was interesting reading the proposal because it really affirms the process that we went through. I mean, it's very similar to what we already did. And I, I am not confident that us doing it again ourselves would bring any different results.
And it's likely, I mean, if we went with another entity to do that other than VLCT, that's likely to be significantly more expensive, is my guess.
I talked to two professional firms that charge 40 to 60% of annual salary.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I mean, those are my thoughts. I think that initially, you know, it's probably not a surprise to any of us that we are where we are, you know, given, given what it is that we're, we're trying to do. But I think that, you know, Mel's not going to be sitting here in two months and two days, you know? So at this point, I think we really ought to have a specific plan relative to who will be there. And as opposed to, and you guys on the committee may already be thinking about this, as opposed to picking up the phone and calling VLCT and saying, hey, can you send us somebody?
So some inquiries have already been made.
Okay.
They've already, we've already started that process.
So, so the one applicant that we have, and I'm not sure if that's for public knowledge or not, so I'm not going to say, say anything, but...
But that's to be clear, it was more than one applicant.
Sure.
Correct.
Yeah, but I, one, one candidate who's, may or may not still be interested, okay? So discussion, have you, in, without saying anything that shouldn't be in the public realm, I mean, is there any other discussion with that candidate? Where are things with that? No? Okay. Okay.
I do think that with VLCT, that our costs will be minimized because of what the committee has already done. There's been so much work that the committee has done that normally VLCT would have to do. Even, you know, things like the, the questions that would need to be asked of the, in the first wave of interviews and all of that stuff, all of that's been already prepared. So we won't have to pay for that. We'll be paying for things that basically we can't do or we can't do very effectively and they can. So I don't, I don't, I don't envision it being a lot of money that we would spend on doing it.
I would be surprised if we hit the low end of their figure. I would be very surprised.
Yeah, I mean, as long as you guys are, and I trust you guys to do this, I mean, as long as you guys have control of that train and it's you rather than VLCT, because I'm more confident in keeping it here than there.
Committee's going to remain, everyone has, has volunteered, we haven't had the conversation, but I assume Lynn as well, has volunteered to continue, will continue to screen the final applicants, will sort of handle the process. And yes, we are driving that train.
Okay. So in the event that we, in the, and I'm not trying to belabor the point, but in the event that we do this, we contract with VLCT, they do whatever it is they're able to do to assist us and we're still at this point, what is the date that we say, okay, we need to get somebody in here on board so that, you know, it can't be a situation where, you know, Mel walks out the door and somebody walks in? I mean, do we have a target date for getting somebody here on an interim basis? Because there's a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge that Mel has. And fortunately, with the strength of this board, it's going, that's going to help immensely, you know, in that transition. But it's still, whoever comes in, I mean, they have to be in a situation where they're able to spend some time with him.
It was never the committee's intention to have there be any more than two weeks overlap.
Okay. I'd ask Mel, I mean, does that, how does that sound to you? Can you, with two weeks with somebody?
I don't know. I mean, let me just tell you, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not moving anywhere. I have a, I have a phone, all right? I really, I, you know, I, I don't have any problem with, with, you know, with people calling me, that's not an issue. I will tell you that because, because how lean we are, all right? We really, we do not have time to train people, just so you know, because I got work that needs to go out the door, all right? So, you know, that, they're really, you know, like, like to have an overlap of two weeks, all right? If, if that means, you know, that, you know, I'm like training somebody for two weeks, I can tell you, you are in one hell of a mess, all right? Because there's a lot of work that's got to go out the door. So I don't know how that, I really don't know how that works. I mean, one of the reasons why I have not been involved whatsoever in this whole search thing is because I got work to do.
What I would say, though, having been working as a city manager in several communities myself and, and also in another community, hiring a city manager, so I've gone through this process before, that I don't know why, but there is a tendency on the part of managers not to go to the manager that's left.
Absolutely.
That, that they come in and they want to do their thing and they will get the information that they need to move along as quickly as they can. And so I think that, even on, even more on an interim basis, that if we get somebody through VLCT to come in on an interim basis, it's going to be somebody that can hop right to it and, and, and keep the trains moving. I don't have any doubt in my mind about that. It's just the nature of the biz and the way the people deal with, with moving into a new community. They, they really move fast and I, I'm really confident that that would happen with us. I think that, that probably if we don't see some real traction on the process within a few weeks to a month, then, then we're on the hunt for the interim.
Okay, right. I, I think that, you know, the important thing is, and particularly if it's an interim, and running, you and I've talked about this, that that individual would have to work very, very closely with you. Because, you know, getting the checks out the door and the bills paid and the lights on and all the day-to-day aspects of it, I mean, that's not rocket science. What you run into is the case that we had in, in the past where we had an individual come into that situation, it's not you. No. That, that got in over their head with a couple of things and it ended up not being a good situation on a couple of, a couple of different fronts and got, cost us some money that we really didn't need to spend. So just, you know, that's my two cents relative to trying to avoid those types of issues. Good luck.
It's good luck for all of us. Okay, so let's move on because we're past our time, we should be...
We have a motion that we haven't voted on.
Oh, that's right, okay. All right, we have that motion. Specific, what have you got down, Joan, is the motion?
No more than 68,000.
To go ahead with the budget not to exceed 6,800.
Any further discussion on that? If there's no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we'll move on. If we can shortcut as many things as we can, we should be counting votes at this point.
Got the cavalry coming in for you.
All right. Budget report, Rennie?
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, and, and look at that, the police budget is under the administration budget. Can you imagine that? Percentage-wise, that is.
Yeah.
So, let me, let me just tell you, I, I am a little bit concerned with the first page, the revenue page here, and you can see the, you know, and it's not like Joan is investing in junk bonds, but I can tell you, our investments, they're all CDs, they're all insured stuff, but they actually, they do have a value, and that value, uh, can get adversely affected with the stock market, even though the, we're getting our interest checks and everything, it's just a value number. So, I really feel like it was only about three months ago that, that the fifteen thousand dollars and, and expecting earnings, I think we got almost a thirteen thousand dollars at one point, and thought we were golden, and now we're down to seven ninety-nine, so I can tell you, the last three months have been absolutely terrible. So, uh, but anyway, other than that, all right, that is a fifteen thousand dollar problem. The police fines, I think, are still okay, given the fact that we, remember, you get that check in July for June, I think it's okay, but I, it would not surprise me that that also comes in short. So, uh, you know, obviously, relative to city offices, uh, I know that, I know that from a zoning standpoint, there's a number of checks that are, that are gonna be processed by the end of the week. I'm fairly confident that that's gonna get over the thirty-four thousand. We're already over this, over the outside sources, but there really isn't any more revenue coming in the door. All of those journal entries have been, have been done, and, and so, that five thousand dollars is not gonna, uh, or nearly six thousand dollars is not gonna increase, but I can tell you, that one ninety-six, I don't, I don't see it, I just don't see it getting to one ninety-six. So, I think there is some problem on the, on the revenue side. Uh, on the, on the expense side, uh, I was gonna say we had great news for administration, but it's not quite so good, uh, given the latest thing, but I think that we're still okay. Police, uh, you know, uh, really, uh, I, I really, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick my neck out and say, "We're gonna come under a hundred percent," all right? And, and part of it is because of expenses alike. Memorial Day costs us money, all right? There's a chunk that goes out the door relative to overtime of the Memorial Day parade, so that, that is coming in. But VLCT has promised me that, that, that we will get our workers' compensation refund check, uh, because our estimated payroll for calendar year two thousand seventeen, compared to actual payroll, so the, the estimated that we paid insurance premiums for, for workers' compensation, compared to the audited payroll, we're gonna get a check for about four thousand dollars, and that four thousand dollars is almost one hundred percent attributed to police, all right? And so, what'll happen, and when that dollar, when that comes in the door, the workers' compensation line item that is currently at twenty-six thousand dollars against a budget of twenty-four, as long as Pam Fecto agrees to get me the check that she said they would get me, that'll actually drop to twenty-two, and so, that'll, that'll make that, uh, in a little better shape. Public Works, uh, relative to highway improvements, we were going to do all of School Street, all of Booth Woods, and we are not gonna be doing Booth Woods, um, because of Habitat for Humanity plans on developing of, of four lots on the right-hand side as you go in. So, it really doesn't make any sense to go spending, you know, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars paving in advance of that construction, and so, therefore, only the School Street, uh, project will be ground and repaved before June thirty. The cost is about thirty thousand dollars for that, and so, that fifty-eight thousand that we spent is going to, uh, you know, approach ninety, but I don't, we won't be spending upwards to that a hundred thousand, so we really should be fine, uh, fine in that regard. Uh, Fire, really, the only thing we have left is, is doing payroll in June, uh, that appears to be fine. And over in Sewer, uh, it's actually gonna be, uh, that's gonna be close, but I do feel, unless there's some catastrophes out there, we should be able to, uh, come under, come under budget. So, that's that one. Mahawi, sorry. So, I gave you a copy of the Mahawi appeal, and, uh, one of the things that I really wanted to do, and I didn't do, was to run a report again for the city council as to how much money we've spent on this appeal, cuz I can assure you that it's, it's over thirteen thousand dollars, and maybe it's fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, the, Mahawi, uh, we did just get this decision, it's dated something or other. Uh, I, I have, uh, had some email exchanges with David Chlansky about this, about this decision, and I will tell you that he is contemplating an appeal to the Supreme Court. I don't know if he will do that or not, uh, and so, I'm gonna reserve comment, uh, until the thirty days have transpired, all right? But I will be, I will be commenting, regardless of what that is, uh, at the next meeting. So, but I will tell you that this decision by Durkin, it really shows the good work of the Development Review Board. That's what it shows, all right? And it shows that we, that we have good regulations, and so, I feel pretty good. I don't feel good about spending thirteen grand, but I do feel good about the good work of the, of the DRB in this regard. So, so that's that one. Governor's Highway Safety Program Regional Enforcement Strategies grant, all right? I, I, uh, I wanna tell you that, that George and I have put forth an application to the Governor's Highway Safety Program, and I, I copied you on this lots of pages, but in a nutshell, the Governor's Highway Safety Program, of which we have a number of grants, they really want this regional approach, all right? Now, there, there is one option, is for the Virgens Police Department to do nothing and just sit back, and we would continue to get our Governor's Highway Safety, uh, program. Another option is to jump in, all right? And, and we've, uh, decided to jump in and apply for about a half a million dollars, and what it would do, it would be to hire an additional officer, purchase a police cruiser, which we don't think would save Virgens Police Department on it, it would save the Governor's Highway Safety Program, because that's who's buying it. And in essence, what it would do is that it would provide police coverage in Virgens for, I'm gonna say, at least ten hours a week, at no cost, all right? So, the, the upside, the, there, there, you know, to me, there is an upside, that we have a Virgens police officer on duty, paid by somebody else, all right, and a certain percentage of their time being in Virgens. In addition, there are times, uh, where this officer, on a Friday night, might be doing Governor's Highway Safety work in Ferrisburg, and if something happens in Virgens, we can grab him and immediately have them assist. So, you have this assisting agency as well, that is, that is out there, uh, that we have as a mo- moment's notice, and so, instead of us having to call in somebody and pay overtime, we have an employee in, in, out there in the field. So, to me, there's a lot of upsides, but there is some downsides, all right? And, and the down, the downsides, you know, are, can we find another officer, all right? So, can we find a good officer? Uh, that's not necessarily gonna be easy to do. Uh, number two, you know, I'm, I, I'm never wild about the Virgens Police Cruiser being outside of Virgens, and it's just me, all right? And because I can tell you, the, the, and I understand why it's out there, but I'll tell you, the, 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 uh, the unfairness, uh, the lack of, uh, of, of equity here between Virgens and the surrounding towns, you know, it really is a little unfair, and, uh, because I can tell you, if there's something that happening in Whispering Pines, something's happening, we're going, all right? You know, we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna not go. If some, somebody's getting shit kicked out of them, we're going. And there ain't nobody to send a bill to, all right? So, in some respects, this might be a way to at least get some kind of compensation here for the time that we're, we're spending outside. The other possibility that this might do, I don't know, uh, I don't know, it's something that the, that the council ought to discuss further, is, you know, really, you know, should, uh, right now, the surrounding towns, Pantin, Waltim, and, and Ferrisburg, they have contractual relationships with the Addison County Sheriff's Department, you know? Should we be considering getting into this, into this business? You know, is it possible that this, that this grant might make their way where we're already there to some degree? I just, I can tell you, we're, when you look at what the city of Virgens is spending for police in its tax rate, you know, compared to our surrounding towns, it's just, it's really unfair, because we are gonna, we are gonna respond in the case of an emergency. So, uh, so anyway, this is the, the approach. I told George, I don't have a problem applying for this thing. This is a grant that goes into effect on the first of October. Uh, it's okay to apply. I wanna read this grant, all right? Because, you know, until you actually get the grant and understand how the mechanics of this thing is gonna work, because the last, cuz I'm trying to, trying to get this grant to subsidize our operation, I, I don't want it to go in the other direction, and that's the fear of these, of these kinds of, uh, these kinds of things. So, uh, I, I really think that this, you know, we've applied, there's probably gonna be a, uh, you know, we're gonna, nobody's responded to us that we've got it or not, but I think that the city council needs to continue to be involved with this, and not just, you know, automatically do it, because if there really isn't any real benefit to us, I don't see any reason to do it. But I think that, I think that there is, potentially there is. That's all. I'm sure I had some other topics, but I'll, I'll.
Defer them?
Yeah.
Okay, Mayor's report, I'm gonna go real quickly. The zoning administrator process has already been covered. I don't think it's an appointment that has to be made by the council or anything. The Planning Commission has its own authority to deal with that, and they're gonna be dealing something very similar to the, the city manager's search, uh, process. We've already had some discussion about a possible recreation committee being, uh, created. I'll get to work on what that composition might be, and what the, the charge of the committee might be, and, and get back to you, maybe not the next meeting, but soon, uh, on that. And the last thing that I have is that, even though we haven't got the truly official notification that we are an opportunity zone, that was submitted by the governor to the federal government, it looks pretty good that we are, um, and I just wanted to let you know that they're having an opportunity z- zone summit in Montpelier, June twelfth, from one to three. It's free, um, and if any of you are interested in attending, because they're gonna go through how you deal with this entity of, of the, um, opportunity zone, how you deal with the legalistics of it, and what can, can qualify, all of those things. And, um, so, just let me know, and I can send you the registration, uh, form, uh, it's online.
What date is?
It's, uh, June twelfth in Montpelier. It's one to three. I'm going, um, and, um, Fred Kenny of the Addison County Regional Planning Commission is also going, uh, but you're certainly welcome if you're interested in finding out more about that. And that's all I have, so.
I did have one other, one other topic, and, and really, all it is, is I wanted to, uh, send out a thank you to Michelle Echols, Mark Koenig, and Steve Rappaport, uh, relative to the pool, all right? They, uh, they did their thing. Michelle power washed the entire pool. I will tell you that is, uh, I don't feel bad that we spent eight or nine hundred dollars on patching material, but the pool really wintered very well. The only repair that Mark had to do was to rebuild that corner that we ran out of materials. Michelle did all of the power washing, all of the, all of the caulking. Steve Rap- Rappaport came down and cleaned the stainless steel gutters, and I'm sure you probably noticed that the pool is full. Uh, the water has got to be about thirty-six degrees, uh, right now, uh, but anyway, I, I think that really, you know, we're all set. Employees are in place. Swim team sign-up is on Thursday, right, Joan?
Yep.
And, um, lesson sign-up, I think, is June second?
Second.
Second, all right? So, everything is, uh, uh, everything is moving along. The other topic is, we originally hoped to, uh, have grievance of appraisals on June sixth, and the, the state has really become very slow. They're slower relative to homestead downloads, you know, we, Joan and I are some of the latest homestead filers in Vermont. I showed up today in the Monday download, and Joan didn't, which tells me that they are still behind up there, and we really don't want to, uh, schedule grievance until we really have the lion's share of the homestead, cuz we don't wanna have to repeat this a second time. So, we have a number for you, but grievance is more than likely gonna have to be pushed off until, uh, June thirteenth. That's it.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made, and?
Seconded.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
I know those.